I'm too busy talking. I call the meeting to order. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, the city in which we live, guide us this evening as we make our decisions. Christ my amen.
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 This is the April the fifteenth. If you hadn't done your taxes, you've got a couple of more hours.
No, you've got two, you've got two more weeks, right? My first, my first. Hurricane.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Of the Noonan City Council, um, tonight, we have the minutes from the regular meeting of March twenty-fifth for you.
I'll move that be approved.
Second.
Motion second, we approve the minutes of March twenty-fifth, uh, regular meeting as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. You also have the minutes from the work session, March twenty-five. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is second, we approve as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. The next item we have on our agenda is, um, an annual event. Pitter sweet, I guess, in that we recognize the, uh, youth, members of our youth council. Do have been on the youth council for three years now. Tonight, as you'll see when they come forward, this is an all ladies night. Guys didn't make the cut. Here we are. So we appreciate your hard work and dedication. We hope, uh, wherever you're going on the list, especially the Georgia bull balls. That you're all successful wherever you go. So, we do this tag team. Ms. Jenkins is going to call your name, where you're headed, and other names about you, and I'll handle it too.
All right. Well, congratulations ladies on being graduates from the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And we are all, of course, very proud of you. I met each one of you the summer that you joined, um, to do the new youth council. So we are very proud that we have with us, um, all of you, and we're going to tell everybody a little bit more about you. So Alex, um, Allen is a twelfth grader at North Gate. She was the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five parliamentarian, a twenty twenty-three Atlanta, um, NLC youth conference attendee. And she will be attending the University of North Georgia, majoring in kinesiology. We have Emma Kaler, who's a twelfth grader at North Gate. She was a twenty-four, twenty-five Christmas parade judge and will be going to University of Georgia, majoring in psychology. We have Helena Gibson, twelfth grader at North Gate. She was the twenty-four, twenty-five North Gate representative, a Christmas judge, um, a Christmas parade judge, an Atlanta NLC youth conference attendee in twenty-three, and she will be attending Georgia College and State University, majoring in biomedicine. Mary Louise Griffiths, twelfth grade Central, is she here?
She's at tennis match.
What else?
Her tennis match did.
Ah, okay. Well, she's going to Stanford University, majoring in pharmacy.
All right.
Lacy Johnson, twelfth grade Heritage. She was a twenty-four, twenty-five historian, and she will be going to University of Georgia, majoring in entertainment and media studies.
All right.
Ashlyn Jones, twelfth grade Noonan. She was a twenty-four, twenty-five Christmas parade judge, Atlanta NLC, which is the National League of Cities Youth Conference attendee. She'll be attending Georgia State University, majoring in marketing. Sarah Park Lee, twelfth grade Noonan. She was the twenty-four, twenty-five Noonan Youth Council treasurer. She will be attending University of Georgia, majoring in interior design and construction management architecture. Jenna Moltner, twelfth grade, North Gate. She was the NYC Chair for twenty-four, twenty-five, the North Gate representative, representative, twenty-three, twenty-four, National League of Cities, Atlanta Conference attendee. And she will be attending the Georgia Institute of Technology, commonly known as Georgia Tech, majoring in chemical and biomolecular engineering. Madison Peter, twelfth grader, East Calwida. Is she not here now?
No.
Okay. She will be attending University of North Georgia, majoring in arts and modern language and culture. Nisha Ready, twelfth grade, North Gate. She was also an NLC youth conference attendee, and she will be attending Mercer University, majoring in public health through the medical scholarship program. Isabel Escorado, twelfth grade Noonan. She's not here. Okay. She's going to University of Mississippi, majoring in geological engineering. Anna Beth Shonan, twelfth grade East Calwida, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five vice chair. And she will be attending the University of Georgia, majoring in entertainment and media studies. Congratulations to each and every one of you who's worked very hard over the last three years, and we appreciate your service. We appreciate your contribution to our community, and best wishes on your next chapter of life. We appreciate you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda this evening, we have appointments to boards and commissions. Oh, I'm sorry. We also have a Noonan Youth Council member who is here tonight, Ansley Lane. She's a sophomore at East Calwida. Thank you for being here, see what happens. Okay. So, we appreciate everybody's attendance this evening. That doesn't leave many people in the room, so. Here we go. Three appointments to, uh, the Noonan Urban Redevelopment Agency. Mr. Thomason has one of those.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, uh, for Tony Galliato to remain on the Nura.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is second for Tony Galliato to remain on the Nura Board. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. Will you put the next item on the next agenda, please? And then Ms. Jenkins.
I'd like to reappoint Gerald Walton to the Noonan Urban Redevelopment Authority Agency.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second, we reappoint Gerald Walton to the Nura Board.
I have mine if I can add.
Okay, yes, we will.
Yeah, my appointment was not on the list, but that person had resigned.
I'm going to call for the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
Then we'll, then we'll get there. Um, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Mr. Shell.
Yes, I have Hank Arnold I want to appoint to my unexpired term, uh, on the Nura Board.
Second.
Motion is second, we appoint, uh, Hank Arnold to an unexpired term on the Nura Board. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. The next is tree parts commission, Ms. Jenkins.
I need to put that on the next agenda.
All right. And then Mr. Thomason, youth activities.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Roy Garner to the youth activities.
Thank you. Motion is second, we reappoint Roy Garner to youth activities. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. And I'd like to put the next one on the next agenda, please. And then Ms. Jenkins, youth activity.
I'd like to reappoint Michael Nix to the youth activities commission.
Motion is second, we reappoint Michael Nix to youth activities. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. Okay. Ms. Phillips, do you have anything this evening?
No, Ms. Mayor.
Um, I have the one thing that's on the agenda this evening, and this is a, a brief, very brief update on Twenty-seven Clark Street, leased with the Historical Society. Everybody understands on the council where we are with this, uh, we discussed several times. There was even a recent article in the Noonan Times Herald telling the public where we are with this. But I thought it was, it would be important, so I'm not going to go through all of that again for the sake of time tonight. I think everybody in the meeting understands where we are with it. But I think it is important to bring this forward to get a motion from council if you agree to instruct staff, because we're not actually taking any action on this. We talked about it a lot, taking no action. So the motion, uh, would be to instruct staff to develop the documents needed for the consideration, for our consideration at our May thirteenth meeting, to step through the process with the Historical Society. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We instruct staff and the city attorney to develop those documents and bring them back to us, May thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty-five. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried, thank you. So, we're under new business, uh, public hearing. This is an application for alcohol beverage license, Abraox Tail, located at thirty-one Market Square Road, uh, Suite one oh one. The reason for this is a new business. I'm going to open a, a public hearing at this, on this, uh, item at this time and ask if there's anyone here that would like to come forward to speak to the issue. Okay. Seeing you are present, you're representing the owner. Thank you. You don't necessarily need to come forward. Just presence is required. We appreciate that, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to the issue? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing, and at this time, everything's in order. I'll ask for a motion on the application.
I'll make that motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second, we approve the application as presented. Uh, the owner is here. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Appreciate the new business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, then, thank you. The next item on the agenda, Mr. Phillips, is authorization proceed with ordinance amendments as discussed during the council?
Yeah, Mayor, Council. Uh, real quick, at the end of the retreat, as we went around the quick hitter sessions, uh, there were some ordinance amendments that were discussed. I'm bringing three forward today for official authorization to send back to staff, uh, to start preparing the documents. Uh, the number one was related to the number of model homes that were permissible to be constructed. Uh, we, we discussed that in detail at the retreat. Uh, the second one is, uh, as it relates to the potential regulation of short-term rentals. Uh, we had previously discussed that item, I think, about six or seven years ago. Uh, but at the retreat, we decided maybe time to revisit that subject. And the third item is, uh, development ordinance, uh, to allow for but to regulate backyard chickens. So those are the three ordinances, uh, that we're asking for authorization to proceed to develop and bring back to this body.
Any discussion, questions?
I just, and, and I don't think we discussed this part of, on the model homes, ensuring that it's only one model per type of home. Correct.
That's what the ordinance is going to do, we'll look at it.
I know, but it's specifically spelling out one per type, not just three homes.
Yeah, I, I do think that was the initiative, but we'll, we'll, we'll develop the language.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't remember.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So is there a motion?
Second.
Motion is second, and motion second is to instruct staff to bring back, uh, ordinances or resolution fixes, however we do it, uh, on those, on those topics that we discussed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody know. All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried, thank you. The next, uh, I think Ms. Meg has this as consideration for the guaranteed maximum price, a GMP for the expansion of the, uh, House of Pickleball Facility, and approval of associated budget.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, good evening. Um, as we also discussed at retreat, um, staff, sorry. Staff has been working with Headley Construction on the design build contract to build six additional pickleball courts at the HOP. Design work is nearing completion at this time, and Headley has provided a guaranteed maximum price of close to one point three million dollars. As you know, the pricing for this addition is a bit over budget, but I'm pleased to share that our construction contract with Lynch came in under budget, roughly four hundred thousand dollars. So for the whole project line item of Sploes Park Projects, we will be in line, um, with the budget. Staff would recommend acceptance of the GMP and approval to amend the existing contract and approval of the budget.
Any questions? Mr. Kelso, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we approve the, uh, GMP on the pickleball facility as presented. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried, thank you. Ms. Donovan, I think, is up next for the consideration to accept the auction offer of city-owned property at twenty-eight West Gate Parkway.
Doing well, thank you very much. Back in twenty twenty-three, you all approved this lot to be surplus and sent to auction. Uh, this was triggered at the request of the adjacent property owner. Um, we had advertised this and then notified both the adjacent property owner and the Housing Authority in Newnan, since they both had expressed interest on this. Um, we held the auction on April first, and Han was actually the only one who showed up, and they were bid, uh, entered a bid of five thousand dollars. Um, the day after, we did get a contact from the adjacent property owner asking if anyone had bid on the property, and we advised that, uh, Han had done so. Um, so here, we're here tonight to see if council wants to accept or reject this bid. And Han, if they do, are successful and with the bid, then they would like to build an owner-occupied home using grant funds.
Right. Okay. So, questions, Ms. Donovan, on the bid?
I have a question. Um, what is the, really the, the value of that piece of property? I mean, five thousand dollars is pretty minimal, so what would be the fair market value?
For a lot in that area, um.
I know it's subjective, but anybody want to venture a guess?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah, I was going to say fifteen thousand or so would probably be about right. Again, with the five thousand dollar bid, it would allow them to have the price to make it more affordable for someone who's purchasing it.
Isn't it an empty lot? Is it totally?
It's a vacant lot, yes, sir. Yeah, for those that don't remember, we bought this, tore the house down, said we were going to build it, um, affordable housing on it, and then decided to sell it. And the Housing Authority is now trying to buy it.
To build affordable housing on.
That's right.
Right. Yeah.
That's correct.
Goal accomplished. The question is, do we want to sell it to them for five thousand?
I think it's a good idea to sell it. I don't think we want a lot like that sitting there. You'd ask, it'd be better to have somebody build it.
And it's a problem for many years.
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and sell it for the five thousand dollars.
Second.
There's a motion is second, we accept the, the bid, an option of five thousand dollars, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, thank you, Ms. Donovan. And then, under unfinished businesses, a public hearing, zoning ordinance text amendments to Article Two and Three revising, uh, the distance requirement of for jet, for child daycare center locations and other child daycare centers and certain other uses. Mr. Smith, are you, sir?
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Good.
We've had some conversation about this in the past. The Planning Commission had a hearing on it March eleventh. Some of these changes are a result of that meeting with the Planning Commission, but essentially, the request is to reduce the distance a child daycare center has to be from another child daycare center and certain other types of uses from a thousand feet to three hundred feet. This would just impact child daycare centers only, and it would also keep the distance from child daycare centers to a potential juvenile detention facility if it ever comes to be in the city to a thousand feet. But these are the changes that are being proposed. Uh, we ask that you would consider it a favorable recommendation, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Let's keep in mind that this is a public hearing that I've opened on this issue. So this is an opportunity for the public to also come forward to speak to this issue at their appropriate time. Does council have any other questions with Mr. Smith?
I do.
Okay.
We had this brought to us, and I asked the question, and then, why was this party to ordinance in the first place?
There is a couple of different reasons. Uh, one of the reasons was because it's associated in the same category as like personal care group homes, assisted living facilities, and substance abuse facilities. And there was some concern initially about the distance from these different uses and the traffic impact they may have upon each other. Personal care group homes, uh, really focused early on when there was somebody trying to open one in a residential area. It required a special exception hearing, it went before the Board of Zoning Appeals. There were neighbors who opposed it. We did not have any regulations at that time that set forth some distance parameters from like and similar uses. We have issued variances in the past, since we adopted the thousand-foot radius difference. We have allowed daycares to go closer than a thousand feet using a variance. But a recent case, approximately a year ago, uh, we had a case where they asked for a variance. The, uh, daycare that was within closer proximity to the proposed one came to the hearing. They countered, and they said, this is not a variance issue, this is a legislative issue. This led to conversation at the BZA, in which our city attorney also agreed it was a legislative issue. That then brought forth a request at that time, after the council looked at, among other ordinances that we were considering after the retreat you all had, of changing this. At that time, it got tabled, and then we had an applicant, a, a potential child daycare facility operator, who came and inquired about a piece of property. The piece of property in question was at a location off Jefferson Street and Jefferson Parkway. Unfortunately, it's about a thousand feet of a previously approved personal care group home. So she was ineligible. Even though there was a great deal of separation, the two uses would have had buffers, there would have been parking sufficient to handle the daycare. It was ineligible because of that distance. And we were also under the auspices, at that time, we could not issue variances for this particular subject matter. So that, we requested that she consider filing a text amendment, and she did. That brought forth this change. And she did suggest the three hundred feet rate difference as opposed to going down to zero. Three hundred feet is a similar radius difference we use for things like alcohol sales, respected churches, and substance abuse facilities as well, as well. So it seemed like a fair measurement.
Okay.
You good?
Uh, that was my question and answer. I, I am concerned because I think one of these along the way was near not only a, a daycare, but an elementary school that had traffic backing up and, uh, along the street, and was thinking, this is not a good idea to lessen the amount, the, the distance, because those traffic, I mean, I don't know about y'all, and, but, sitting in traffic to get to the school and to the daycare was horrendous, in that having that lapse was, uh, in the rules was going to make traffic just worse by a lot.
Well, public schools were never an issue with child daycare centers. There was no distance, uh, requirement from a child daycare center to a public or private school.
I, I understand. The, the issue is that there is a daycare, in this particular situation that I'm talking about, is a daycare, that's right there with school backing up traffic. I know that's not part of the equation, but if there was another one allowed to be there, then you still have that traffic issue with the existing school that was within that thousand feet. And so I'm just wondering if this is an anomaly situation there? Or if this is real reason why we had a thousand feet distance there to keep us from having this extraordinary amount of traffic that comes at a couple of points a day? When you've got pickup or drop-off in the morning, that two-thirty-ish time period where a lot of parents come in and get kids, and then that after-work hours period? And you have them so close together that it would be a, a traffic nightmare.
There was some consideration given to that, as well as part of the requirement initially at that time, was to separate the, for traffic purposes. But as mentioned, we have issued variances in the past, so we have daycares that operate closer than originally envisioned, um, which has created, in some cases, a situation where there may be some traffic issues. Where not, only one that you mentioned to me, maybe it's that off Jefferson, is it off, uh, the bypass near Jefferson Parkway?
No, it's not that one. It's, um.
Noonan Crossing Elementary, Blue Marble?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and if I may, or?
Yes.
I mean, I think her point that is, is this, is this a one-off?
Right.
Are we fixing a problem for a one-off?
We've had other requests for daycares to operate within that thousand-foot distance requirement. Uh, this particular one is, is, is the one that came after we stopped issuing variances.
Right.
But we know in the past that we've issued several of variances, so we know that it's a request that will probably come to us in the future.
So it's not a one-off?
No, sir.
Okay.
And, and that's what I'm concerned about, is are we now saying carte blanche, hey, it's three hundred square, it's three hundred feet apart? And then we have daycare popping up all down the street, and you get several, and then you start getting that stacking traffic and all of that that goes with it. Um, I am very concerned about that, especially since, you know, in that particular session, situation, um, on, um, Lower Fayetteville. I mean, we've talked about widening that road for a long time, and we can't afford to do it. And so we're just going to make traffic worse when you get situations? I just, I, I don't, I, I think that's a.
So are you suggesting to go back to variances and require a variance process per use?
I am asking what we can do.
Or some, or some, some means to do that?
Or a special use of some, I don't know. I'm trying, I'm, I mean, what I know is that I think that this thousand foot, just going down to three hundred is going to create some problems.
One of the goals in, kind of seeing this planning commission is not to inhibit the market. Uh, to allow for businesses to thrive and grow, and to meet the needs of a growing community. With a number of new residents, young families moving into the area, there is a need for more job, child daycare centers.
There definitely is.
And so with the current distance requirements, that restrains and restricts the number of locations that a child daycare center can operate. So one of the thought processes was to reduce that, to allow for the market to provide that opportunity. Should someone wish to be successful and open up a child daycare center to better serve incoming residents.
Earlier, you said that the person who, um, was requesting the text amendment also suggested the three hundred.
That's correct.
If you had looked at it, would it have been different?
I might have suggested just going down to zero, let the market rule. Let the free market determine where the best locations are for child daycare centers.
Okay.
As long as they follow state regulations, and they can meet the minimum acre size, they have the recreational area, they can provide adequate, you know, ingress egress for traffic and parking, to me, it's a free market issue.
Yeah. Okay.
But that is why we also have zoning rules, and we decide those things, um, taking into consideration the, um, the makeup of our community and the forecasting that we have in our community for how we can handle the infrastructure around these businesses. And I think that there's a significant infrastructure issue here concerning traffic and having daycares too close to each other.
It is, the three hundred feet, is that door front to door front, or is that property line to property line?
Property line, property line.
Okay.
Dean, is stacking part of the requirement to open a daycare, the ability to stack cars, do we look at that?
We do. We look at how they're, they're parking, how they're going to lay it out. Do they have the ability to get traffic off the road, back on the road, in a, in a way? We do look at those issues, yes.
So, if we had a situation where, I mean, it was just a mess already, and somebody came along, would we have the ability to say no? Because you can't get the stacking required?
Sometimes you may have, well, there's a previous daycare that operated for years and years and years, and maybe it came in prior to the regulations, and somebody else bought it and wanted to come in, and they weren't going to make any other improvements. You wouldn't have really any ability at that point to make it, to acquire any changes, no, sir.
Yeah. But a new one, we would have the ability to say, hey, this one's not going to work out.
A new one, or if they wanted to renovate and expand and add to an existing one, at that point, we might be able to bring them into compliance.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. But not to prolong the discussion here, but you just said bring him into compliance. What is compliance with stacking?
Well, the compliance would be to make sure, let's say, for example, they only have one entrance, one in, one out. We want to make sure they have adequate, you know, parking for their staff, adequate parking for anybody that's dropping off, and that they have a route that allows them to facilitate easy drop-off, easy pickup.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Is there a motion on the issue?
So moved.
Oh, well, I'm sorry. This is an opportunity for the public to come forward, this is a public hearing. Anyone here would like to speak for or against this issue? This is your opportunity to do so. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time, and now I ask if there's a.
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Have a motion, and second, we approve as.
Need a motion to accept the recommendation of. I make a motion, we accept the recommendation of.
Second.
Motion is second, we accept recommendation, the report and recommendation for planning commission. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Now, we'll go back to the other motion that was on the floor, which is a motion to approve the zoning ordinance text amendments as presented. Uh, there was a motion and a second. Any other questions?
Did the, uh, did the lady that requests this, is she here tonight?
I don't believe she is, no, sir.
So, was it that important?
Yeah. We did notify her, it would be this evening, but, um, we did not hear back from her.
We note her point of view, I believe. Yeah. She requested the text amendment. So, uh, any other thing? I'll, I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Did, did pass, six, one. Thank you very much, we appreciate it, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay. The next is also a public hearing that I will open at this time. This is, are you still up, Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
As long as you'll have it.
Stand by. Okay. Public hearing rezoning request, RZ twenty twenty-five oh two, by Stephen L. Jones, attorney-at-law, on behalf of GHV Noonan LLC, for eight point three oh acres located on Noonan Crossing Boulevard East, tax parcel oh nine. Boulevard East, tax parcel 098A295 from OI-1 Low Density Office and Institutional to RU-7, urban residential single family for the purpose of developing town home community. This is a public hearing. I'll open it at this time and ask Mr. Smith for his report from the planning commission.
Thank you kindly. I'm mayor and council. This is a summary. The full details of the assessment are available in their packet as well as the online agenda. But for the purpose of this evening's meeting and my presentation, I will simply give you a brief summary. The subject property is located at this highlighted area on the project map. You'll see it situated between two existing residential neighborhoods, Stone Bridge to the north, Woodbury Estates to the south. This property was originally approved in 2004 for a town home development that would consist of not only of this piece, but of the now Woodbury Estates, including a piece that is now the assisted living facility on the corner of Summerlin Boulevard and Lower Fayetteville Road. In 2008, the piece was rezoned for what was called RU-2, which is a residual zoning district for town home development, to office institutional low density. For that time, the purpose of developing medical and office buildings. As it sits now, it is currently wooded and vacant. Portions of this land have been used to build the link project for the city. And now the request is to rezone this to RU-7 for the purpose of developing 33 town home units. You looked at this at your work session, you had an opportunity then to, to ask the applicant more depth questions about it. I think there were a couple of things that came up. I think the applicant will plan to address that at their part. But essentially, the minimum lot sizes will be 2,100 square feet. These will be fee simple marketed for sale by anticipated price points between the low 400,000s to the, I mean, high 400,000s to low 500,000s. Amenities include making improvements to the existing link trail, exploring options for additional link trail connections, and passive open space. As far as standards, we found this application meets all eight standards, and here's a brief summary of those standards. Is the proposed use suitable in view of the zoning and development of adjacent nearby property? This subject tract is bordered predominantly by residential zoning designations. The western border runs adjacent to Noonan Crossing Boulevard East, and the zoning of the property to the west of that is OI-2, which is office institutional medium density. Under the original zoning of RU-2, the density allotment would have been five units per acre. With RU-7, it's only four units per acre. RU-7 does represent a small downgrade from the original RU-2 zoning at a higher use than the OI-1 current designation. But overall, we feel like the use is suitable. Will this use adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property? The anticipated impact from any sort of development is traffic. The applicant's concept plan illustrates one-way traffic coming in and going out, which helps ease the traffic flow on Noonan Crossing Boulevard East. And also, the surrounding properties are residential with sufficient buffers to minimize any noise or nuisance issue. Staff feels the proposed use will not adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property other than an increase in traffic on Noonan Crossing Boulevard East. Are there substantial reasons why the property cannot or should not be used as currently is owned? No, there aren't any substantial reasons, but there is a reason. This, this property is limited and restricted by several environmental factors. It is difficult, I think, for any commercial development to be successful with the amount of constraints you have with the environmental issues. You might be able to get an office building or an urgent care, but at, to date, we've had no concept plans, no pre-submittals, no conversation with any developer about turning this into something that would be allowed under the current zoning. So any commercial office space would face those limitations. We feel like that no, it can't, there's no reason it can't be used, it just hasn't been used, and certainly is a standard that we think is being met. Will the proposed use cause an excessive or burdensome use of public facilities or services, included but not limited to streets, schools, water or sewer utilities, and police or fire protection? All the service providers have indicated they have the ability to respond and serve this proposed development with existing resources. Is the proposed use compatible with the purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan? The future land use map does show it as business slash office, but as you may recall, and recent developments have been approved on major commercial corridors, so an argument can be made that this project would fit into the fabric of the area with the existing residential developments around it. Is the proposed use consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning district? Yes. The RU-7 zoning district allows residential developments for not only to single-family homes, but for townhomes. The density aligns with the RU-7 zoning requirements. Is the proposed use supported by new or changing conditions not anticipated by a comprehensive plan? When a property is vacant after several years since a rezoning, it can be construed, the property may not be viable for uses allowed under that current zoning. The updates to the future land use map and comprehensive plan show the proposed development as a use inconsistent with business slash office. However, the need for more housing options is evident, and this proposal accommodates that need. Does the proposed use represent or reflect a reasonable balance between the promotion of public health, safety, morality, or general welfare and the right to unrestricted use of property? We feel like that it does. The preliminary tree management plan is in your packet. Mr. Furbish did comment on it. His concern is the area between the right-ofway and the townhomes. He would like to see a little bit more detail about what that type of planning might be. If this rezoning is successful, and they move to the site plan stages, that will be a landscape plan issue that would be taken care of at that particular time. In the March 11th Planning Commission meeting, they, they did recommend approval or by a three to two vote. As you may recall, we had the work session March 25th. Suggested conditions are that they be consistent with the density, project data, amenities, property conditions, and architectural details as provided as part of this application. The project will be capped at 33 units maximum, and rental units shall be capped at 10% of the 33 units maximum, or no more than three townhomes could be available for rent. And that's our assessment.
Thank you. This would be the opportunity for the applicant to come forward to speak to the issue.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, staff. My name is Stephen Jones with Taylor English. Here today, on behalf of the applicant. I'm accompanied today by James Nash with Heatherland Homes, which is an affiliate and a builder for this project, as well as Steve Moore. He's the engineer of record for this project. I want to give, we've got a PowerPoint, if you don't mind. At the council's workshop, we had a discussion about this project. I want to give a brief recap of the project and then discuss those points that we discussed at the workshop. So here's an overview of the project. You can see on Noonan Crossing Boulevard, this is approximately 8.3 acres. You'll see it there on Noonan Crossing Boulevard. This is the last plan that we reviewed during the council's workshop. During that discussion, we had a discussion really about two, three things. First, being a link trail access swinging behind the townhomes. Second, amenity areas. And then three, the homogeneous facade. We had all white. That is, I'll just say, not something that the builder is wedded to, but that was a product that we have previously built in another jurisdiction. And so I'll go through those issues in turn. This is a concept that Mr. Moore's firm came up with, showing a link access trail behind the property. We've had a discussion with staff about this dedication. Mr. Moore drew this as an easement. The easement would be located within impervious setbacks, making it impossible for the builder to construct that. However, it's my understanding that the city has constructed similar portions of the link and similar impervious surfaces. So in conjunction with staff, and I have, what I'll hand out to you is a proposed text for an additional condition on the zoning, we've come up with this. So what you can see is the yellow is the portion where we've proposed the link pursuant to Mr. Moore's engineering, that the applicant would then dedicate and fee simple the yellow line and then everything south of the yellow line down to the property line. On the green line to the left and the green line and above the property, you'll see the existing portion of the link. The applicant and property owner, a number of years ago, was, a portion of this property and easement was condemned for that portion of the link. And then you've got the portion of the link along the frontage. The applicant's also proposed, and this was part of the initial plan, an easement for relocation of the link farther into the site so that you can have that green strip. Because one of the concerns that we heard, I think, at and prior to planning commission, was that the current portion of the link is coterminous with the right-ofway. So when pedestrians and bikers are using the link, there's, it's hard to distinguish between where the link ends and the roadway begins. And it's really just a safety buffer as well in that landscape strip. This is a zoomed-in feature of this, so you can see that easement for the relocation of the link, and then you can see where the fee simple for the trail would run behind. In terms of amenity areas internal to this, we have an amenity area, but given the link will now, or as proposed, would surround the property on all sides, we really view the link as the central amenity for this property or the primary amenity. Council will have before it, my understanding, another rezoning request that's going through the DRI process. For the parcel that is just to the west of this, across the Boulevard, they will also, are proposing a link tie-in to our property. And so we hope that the mixed-use portion of that, should it be within the council's judgment to approve that project, that that would be amenity for this project. But, and then internal to the site, we have a park area, we have an additional island area for dog walking. You see the eyebrow and ball tossing frisbee, whatever have you, as well as the central mail kiosk and some additional on-street overflow parking. As a reminder, these homes, and we'll go through this in a minute again, but each of these homes has a two-car garage. Then with the driveways, it's an additional two-car garage. So we meet the parking requirements with the homes, but we've also got some additional overflow parking along the bottom of that eyebrow. Here's an overview or overhead rendering. We didn't have time to draw that link in the back, but you can, you can visualize it. And then finally, the other concern that, that we heard at the workshop was the architectural facade. I've got a few renderings I'll show to you there. But first, as I, as I stop on the link, I'd like to pass out this motion, if I can hand Mr. Sears for his review, and then if it meets his approval, will you mind issuing that? Or I'll carry him around if you'd like, Mr. Sears. Just to let you know, the applicant is indifferent as to the facade material. We've got construction plans for these. This is a plan that we've built in other jurisdictions. So the facade we show is the same, but changing facade materials really is, is not that big of a deal. And I'll show you, these are just some changes in paint color as we go through these. So I'll show you the first, and then a modified where we just show that we can, we can do a different facial color, should that be something that council finds important. We'll see. There we go. I have two videos, too. One that shows you both types of facade colors. So that would be along Noonan Boulevard. That would be what is visible, visible from the public right-ofway with traveling motorists, internal right-ofway as well. I'll flip to the next video. They are both the same except for the facade color. So I won't make you sit through both of them. Let's see here, you can see the different facade color. You can see that internal eyebrow park on the left with the central mail kiosk, the on-street parking. This is the view from the rear of those front-loaded townhomes that are interior to the site. Front-loaded, of course, meaning the garage is on front facade. This would be the rear view as you travel along the link. And then, of course, the folks in the home would have a nice view of the link as well. Again, I'll just go through a few more renderings. This is the original. This is, would be coming out of the link at that proposed development to the west, again with different color schemes. This is looking south from the second entrance, the exit. And then again, this is looking north, just north of the entrance to the development. And then again, with a different facade. So that's, that's the Heatherland project, I think, and hope that we've addressed some of the things that we discussed at this council workshop. With that, we'd ask that you do vote consistent with the planning commission's recommendation, as well as staff's recommendation, and we would proffer, should it be with the council's discretion, the condition which has been distributed to you.
Any questions? Anyone? All right, thank you. This is an opportunity for anyone opposed to this project to come forward. This is a public hearing, and the future opportunity to speak in opposition to this rezoning request. All right. Seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time. And the first thing I'll do is ask for a motion to, to accept the report and recommendation from the planning commission.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion, second we accept report and recommendation from the planning commission. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Okay. Any other questions of staff or anyone on this? Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to have a discussion on this property condition?
Yes. Have, you've, you've reviewed it.
I'll just say, this is subject to Mr. Phillips' acceptance, because this does put a burden on the city to maintain that area to the south, or I guess that's actually to the east of the proposed easement. This is what we did.
We had.
Another development that was on McIntosh Parkway. If you recall, the very first residential development kind of to the east of the training center.
Right.
All of that area back behind from there, there's a line there that all that, basically beneath it, or similar beneath the Georgia Power right-ofway, all the way back up to the back park. This was part of the condition in their regard, and the density was, the donated land was permitted to be used for the density.
Okay. So how did that work out for you?
It, it's worked out well. There's no maintenance. I mean, very little. I mean, the only potential thing we may have, if there's a, the tree that's near an adjoining property line, you may get notified of a tree. But I think what staff's plan here, if you remember a few council meetings ago, you authorized the filing of grant application for funding of the link section. What we would like to do, if, if this is accepted by council, this is approved, if we are successful in those, in those grant funds, this would be one of the portions of the link sections that we would build as we're going north and south. So we would, we would like to actually build the link here, as, instead of it just being green grass.
Well, this is the first step in doing it.
First step.
Right. Okay. So any motion here to approve the ordinance would also include the, would also include stating that we're gonna add this condition.
Acceptance of the link.
Yes.
And essentially, that would be to add it as condition number four.
Donation of the link.
To the, right.
Condition four.
Condition number four to the ordinance.
Point of clarification here. Are we talking about just that portion of land that is the yellow and all that shaded? Are we also talking about that blue section on the front?
No.
Mr. Shay, could you go back to that map?
Building map.
With the yellow on it?
Okay.
I think I might have had too many slides. It'd take a while to get back there.
Yeah. The only, the only thing that I would, that we could work out here is because of the way the link is, you know, we'll designate that area, but there, it may be necessary within to give us a temporary construction easement to the west, maybe 10 feet to the west, to be able to build it without, you know, having to do too much damage to the donated property. So if we could just add that as an understanding, that we might come along at least 10 feet off the edge of the 20 feet, because I think that's about what we got most everything else, was it not?
Yeah, we, we have to use a little bit different construction technique when we're building in some of the environmentally sensitive areas. So yeah, any, any time that we don't have to encringe, further closer to the creek.
So, yeah, any time that we don't have to incringe further closer to the creek, it helps us, so.
That's perfectly fine with the applicant.
Okay.
And...
Would the minutes need to show that, please?
Counsel, I'm going to answer your question. Yes, it would be all the portion that's highlighted yellow as well as the yellow line.
Okay. But the blue is what you're going to do.
The blue is a proposed easement that we're putting for the relocation of the link. Correct.
Okay. So again, any motion to approve would be that we also include condition number four.
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry?
I'll make that motion, that we approve the rezoning request as well as condition four.
Second. Motion, a second, that we approve the rezoning request with the addition of condition number four that was presented this evening. Any further discussion?
So, just for clarification, if I could, this is just for easements. The builder is not responsible for building any of the link at all, correct? The blue section or the yellow?
Correct. That's not what I heard you just say. The yellow section, green section, no. If you'll come forward again and make sure we understand this, but he said blue was what you, the blue area...
He just said easement, so I just want to make sure that it's...
I think it means a regular easement.
Yeah, I think the builder would be okay with constructing the blue section. If it would be a system improvement, they would ask, though, if there'd be any credit for like permit fees or anything like that, considering that's a contribution to the entire system.
That's a great question, and I can answer that. Impact fee is a, are used to develop link section, and if he is building a system improvement, we would be able to calculate the cost of that improvements and credit it back in the impact fee category. Yes, we would. And we've done that with other projects. That's standard operating procedures.
But the question was, it still stands, the blue area is building responsibility.
That's correct.
Mr. Greco?
Thank you.
Get to answer. Okay.
Thank you.
So, am I, in this, I'm not real clear, as, so he showed us two, basically, color schemes. Is this the part where you say which color scheme would be part of this package, or is that just up to them to determine? He had an A color scheme, he had a B color scheme?
You're talking about individual units? You're talking about individual units changing colors?
Individual units were a different color, which was much more attractive along those interior as well as the, actually, I live right there in Stonebridge, so along that, I travel that, so I could see aesthetically the B one E film that you showed us.
We are indifferent as to whether it's the whitewash or if it's a variation. If you wanted to add a condition that said you shall not have a homogeneous color along the facades...
That would be a condition, yes.
That's perfectly fine with the builder.
Okay. So who made the motion?
I did. I'll accept that.
Okay. Everybody understands where we're at now?
Yep. If I just, one quick clarification about the link section, that it will be built in coordination with staff to the link standards.
Well, the city's going to build it.
No, he said he's going to build the blue section.
Yeah, okay.
Well, the frontal section will basically mimic what you see coming down the Boulevard anyway.
That's right.
You know, there will be the curb delineation and the separation, because right now, it's so dangerous because it's just, but yes. They'll build it to the specs, and then they will get the system credit towards your impact fees.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you for being here this evening. The next item under visitors, this is a request for the race with the orphans to block parking and close Brown Street between West Washington Street and Madison Street starting six P.M. on Friday, May the second, or Saturday, the, May the third event. Preston was here this evening. She's done a great job through the years for this race. Is there a motion to approve?
I make that motion.
Motion, a second, to approve as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Thank you very much for being here and conducting the race. The next request is from Dooley Mack Constructors for an exemption to city noise ordinance to pour concrete for tractor supply project at four A.M. on Saturday, May the third. Who is handling this this evening? Is there a representative from Dooley Mack?
Representative from Dooley Mack, yes, sir. The address wasn't included, so can somebody tell me where this is?
Pardon?
The address wasn't included, so...
Adjacent to Avery Park.
And on the corner across from T and R.
Highway twenty-nine.
On the highway twenty-nine, nobody.
Okay.
You know where we're on. C and S, across the street.
Hasco, can you navigate or Meg to...
The old EMT.
The old EMT. Yeah, 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 yeah.
We already re-zoned and all that that we didn't know. So this is that one. Got it.
Got it? We can pull a map up if anybody needs to see the location.
Anybody?
I got it.
Okay. State your case, please, if you'll state your name.
Certainly, David Coplis. I'm the superintendent there on that construction project.
All right.
And the concrete and the trucks transporting it starts to set up in a pretty short amount of time. And with the traffic at rush hour in the morning during the week, it's very difficult. We're pouring in the neighborhood of four hundred yards. It has to be poured continuous. And in order to get a successful slab, the concrete needs to be delivered in a timely manner. And so a lot of these projects, we need to pour them, start them very early in the morning to avoid the traffic and also to avoid the weather. Once the sun hits it, it sets up really fast also. So we're thinking a Saturday morning would be advantageous.
Any questions? I have a major concern with this. The people who live there in Avery Park, I know what concrete trucks sound like, and then a pour and beep, beep, beep with the backup, and this is four A.M. on a Saturday morning when somebody's worked hard all week and they want to sleep in, and all of a sudden here comes concrete trucks. Doesn't the ordinance allow a seven o'clock start?
Seven o'clock start tonight.
To when? Ten o'clock, ten P.M.?
Yeah, I think it's...
And this is a twelve-hour four you've got?
We looked at it.
So clearly, inside the seven...
Seven to ten.
Seven to seven is a, I can't, I don't know anybody else. I can't vote for this. I mean, it is just, it is just a very difficult ask of those people to have to bear with what's going on there for that day. Saturday's traffic is generally lighter anyway, so I think your issue with getting, unless you're bringing concrete from a really far distance for some reason, with all the concrete companies we've got here in Noonan, there are concrete companies available. So, anyone wants to make a motion on this or speak up in favor of it?
The only thing I'm just like, though, is how far back the residents would be affected like, I don't know whether the right, if it was in that neighborhood, I don't know. It affects them.
Believe me, they're right there.
Keith's been there.
I've walked the property during construction. They're right there. It's like, here's the property, and they're going to be your really good customers, and I don't, I don't think you want them upset at you. So it's, it backs up right to the houses, so.
Can you survive with seven A.M. start, having all the way till ten o'clock at night on a Saturday?
We'll make it work if the council feels like there'll be an inconvenience for the residents. We'll figure it out.
It's only three hours difference, so.
Well, I think it's more than an inconvenience. I think it's a hardship.
Okay.
I really do.
Okay.
So, any other comments or questions?
I appreciate the consideration.
I appreciate you being here and asking questions. It's always no until you ask it, and I think it's going to be no after you ask it in this situation. Is there a motion?
Motion to deny the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, to deny the request of the pour for the Dooley Mack Constructors on tractor supply. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next is a consideration of the contract terms of Callwell Development Investment regarding fifty-seven East, and we are going to move into an executive session to discuss that particular item. But before we do that, I'm going to call Mr. DeBeauz. He has an announcement.
Yes. Today, I'm announcing my desire not to run for my city council seat later this year. It's been a pleasure serving my district and the citizens of Noonan for the last twenty years, but it's time for me to retire. Thanks to you, city council members, who have been so nice to put up with me. To each of you, I owe a bit of debt of gratitude. To the city manager, Cletus Phillips, to Hasco, Meg, and Megan, thanks for helping along the way. So there you have it. There will be new person filling my shoes next January twenty-twenty-six. So that's it.
Thank you. Mayor Purtem, we need to move into executive session for real estate and legal.
Got it. I move that we now enter into closed session as allowed by OCGA five zero dash fourteen dash four pursuant to advice by the city attorney for the purpose of discussing real estate and legal, and that we, in open session, adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor or presiding officer to execute an affidavit in compliance with OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash four, and that this body ratify the actions of the council taken in closed session and confirm that the subject matters of the closed session were within exceptions permitted by the open meetings law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. We go into executive session for real estate and legal. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The meeting is moving into executive session.